...that it was the case that she was going to be placed. And so I reached that, not knowing on, and so I reached back that where would be forward, if she was forwarded in a different, like, certain level where she didn't have, she would be placed in a lower grade where she was staying first grade and she had that authorization to do that. I then said to her, if she can show me the period of the policy where she has the authorization, because I come from California, out there is differently, of course, where I am the mother and the parent in a bar game, where I made the decision to place her in the first grade or to have, to have her left in the first grade or to have her go to second grade. And I didn't understand really, so, the process of like, her assessment test, Ms. Hager from Smoke Tree Elementary, as we mentioned, she would be placed in a section where she would be tested and, you know, move no distractions, and they care about their students and their grade levels and where their reading and math levels are. Where, my daughter had came out 15 minutes later, and she, and I had asked her how did the test go, and where did, you know, where did she go for the test? She was then, my daughter said that she was in the library, and a group of kids had came in during the assessment test that she was taking with that person, where I felt like she got distracted, she didn't have enough time, you know, and she got distracted. So I then asked Ms. Hager if she can please retest her with proper standards where she's in a room, and she didn't get any walk-on, walking or distractions of kids that are noticing coming into the library, especially for them to be young and for them to, you know, be talking and stuff. She said she wouldn't retest her, that if I took her to another school, she would, that they would be glad to test her, because, so, I went to another school, and she, they had, they were going to retest her, but we had parents of the district, and, you know, there was a bit of a, some, like, things going on, like, they weren't, I wanted to know the policy, and I wanted to see where it said, where the, where the, she had the authorization to put her in there, and I didn't see that. So, I had, I had, yeah, there's, okay, I'm going to try to do this as quickly as possible, she's a little nervous. I came down from California because my daughter had some concerns, and she would like her daughter in school. So this is what transpired, where she called the district, she was trying to get some information, the district did not return calls, they then stated that they would, that, that, the fact, they had facts, this, which you have a copy of, which is their policy and procedure that teachers have the right to call the student back, which is typed out by one of the secretaries that, here in the school district, which took three weeks. When I came, and my daughter was very ill, I came, and then they, they presented me with this copy, which kept my granddaughter out of school for three weeks, and in, in fact, it was the policy and procedure, if they would have given it to her in a timely manner, she could have evaluated and say, okay, this is the way this state runs, let's get her into school, I accept these circumstances, because everything's different when she does not know, she's new. Which, it wasn't given to her in a timely manner. Therefore, in the testing situation, we ended up taking my granddaughter to, to tell us this, they tested her for an hour and 30 minutes, and Smoke Tree only tested her for 30, anywhere from 15 to 20 minutes. So our concern is, with other people coming in, and if there would be a policy and procedure in place where they have access, and if it's there, that it be quickly and delivered to
the parent's concerns. Take your time and work on it correctly.
Concern. So that was the concern, because then, when we came down, then there was a, a situation where they, one of the personnel members told my daughter that she was going to be arrested because my granddaughter was out of school, and she was going to call the, the resource officer to come and, and inspect my daughter and arrest her. And I said that there was no need for, for her to be hostile like that, it's just that my daughter was coming from one state to another, and she does not, not understand, and she's going to the area and didn't know. So if there was something in place for these type of situations, this way, new mothers to a new state, or parents can adequately understand and be able to accommodate their children as far as the regulations and guidelines in this state.
The whole point of it, yeah, is that, is that policy, that's actually a big one.
So is she referring to statute, because I don't have what you have.
I do, yeah.
Sorry.
This is what was typed out from Mrs. Terry, the, she typed it out.
It's referencing statute, then?
Right, but it's a little vague, it's a little vague, and the way it says it here is that the teacher will evaluate the student, and then after the teacher evaluates the student, then they will inform the mother, and then they will go to the principal, and the principal will therefore accommodate or recommend what they should do with the student as far as placement. So that's why we were a little concerned. It's just overall, what my concern, my big concern was, is I wanted my daughter to properly retest her, where she did not have no distractions, as Ms. Hager had said, you know, where she does professional with her kids, where they're a nice, quiet place, whether or not, you know, and-
I understand. It's Ms. Hogard.
Ms. Hogard.
So, you know, and if you don't mind, I'm going to ask Mrs. Sire to meet with you, our superintendent, and hopefully we can resolve this situation, but I appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you, your willingness, hearing you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, just one. Okay, we'll move on to recognition of visitors, and tonight, we have the Parent and Community Engagement Committee, the base presentation of Darnold-Boltz. And I believe Sarah, that is our next student class?
Okay. So, every year, we present the PowerPoint that briefly goes over some of the key points as to which, what each school is going to do to, for each of the standards, for each of their involvement. There are six standards, and the standards are there to promote meaningful parent and family participation, as well as to raise awareness regarding programs that are offered not only within the district, but also within the community, that help and provide different services for children, as well as families, so. Do you have anyone who does tonight? This is our committee members, each school has at least one certified member, as well as, we do have parents that are involved in this, and then we also have our Title One coordinators for our Title One schools. So as a group, we go through the standards, and we also go through each plan to make sure we are aligned to, to the standards specifically. The first standard is welcoming all families into schools. Each school has a variety of different activities, the purpose of it is for two-way communication between the parents and the schools. At these communication nights, a lot of the schools go over the expectations for grade levels, as well as standards. They do also have activities throughout the year that promote ways for the parents to help students at home with specific standards. Nautilus just recently did their math night, at their math night, they provided activities that parents could go home with to work on a specific set of fluency standards with their children. I know that the, that each school has different activities, Smoke Tree does have their parent university, they focus on specific standards, and helping parents understand, because we hear a lot of, that knew math, or this, that, or other thing, and so they go through and try to help parents, as well as many of our family grandparents and ancestors and grandchildren that are experiencing children, so to kind of help with that. They also showcase what is being done in the classrooms. Darnold-Boltz just had their seventh grade, Miss Hallis' class just did their wax museum, so students were, they had, in a project where they had to research a particular person, then they had to present that in a, in a research paper, as well as do public speaking, where they cover their speaking and listening standards. The second standard is communicating effectively, these are a list of different activities that each school does to have communication, to make communication between the homes and families. A lot of times, they'll use them for what's going on in the classroom, as well as the parents are aware of what assignments and what activities are being done. Not only are these used by the parents, but these are also used by the students, reminds one of one, so that the, the students can actually respond back via text to their teacher if they have a question, as well as some of the other activities that are up there. And supporting student success, all of these are ways that the schools are actually trying to help each of the students with their individual needs, we'll see that there's Title One tutoring up there, so we're looking for students who maybe might be what we consider to be on that level, they have, they need a little bit of extra help with math and reading standards. Most of the schools do have activities, or rooms in which students can go in to get extra help on homework, if they need it before school or after school, different activities in order so that the students feel that they can be successful in school. Speaking Up For Every Child is standard four. Every school site has our student intervention team or our sit team, those are specifically for students who we feel might need some extra help, they'll meet, and they go over accommodations or interventions, then they will come back and meet to see if those accommodations and interventions are being successful, or if we need to look at something else. So we'll set that peer mediation to help with any, just, you know, kids, they fight, they need some help with that. Then, though, we do also have some community services on there as well, that's hard, which is to have a huge area of resource team, they meet, I believe it's monthly. Okay, good. They meet monthly, and that's a group of different community members and agencies that actually can help students with specific needs and that way. Standard five is sharing, sharing partners, so this is a way in which we can see that parents, as well as school teachers and other school employees are getting together to help to come up with activities and ideas, ways to make their school run better. Also, a lot of the schools, because of having this CNA this year, the site-based councils are back in, and so we have a lot more community, as well as parent involvement. And standard six is collaborating with the community, this is just a short list, which is actually kind of long, but it's a short list of the community members that have come up to the schools and are helping them, and helping with needs that they need. I know that Ms. Nohousey is working with some people with getting computers into her classroom, so there's all sorts of different activities and different communities that are out there to actually help them. And so, later on this evening, you will be going through, I believe, the parents, the district parents' plan, and it will hit on each and every standard for each school a little bit more specifically.
Next, we have the Master Teacher Grant and NT3 Grant update.
Okay, I'm asked to do a presented update on our NT3 Master Teacher Grant. Before I do that, I would like to make sure that my colleagues are recognized and they're participating. I have this Jenny, this is Jenny Sotter, she's a high school English teacher, I should also mention again, National Teacher of the Year. And then we have Kristy Olson, she's a function as an academic coach, she's lived part-time with, at Connie School, and she's also serving as one of our mentors in this NT3 grant. But the interesting thing about this grant, what it's allowed me to do is work with these two people monthly, and I've come to respect and admire their craft, they are very intelligent, knowledgeable people, they, they're having a tremendous impact on our new teachers. And right now, nationally, not just Arizona, there is a crisis in education, we're still having a difficult time attracting people to come into this profession. In our state, Arizona actually has allowed emergency certification, which is basically a Band-Aid on trying to get people into the classroom, and a lot of those people are not highly qualified. So we're having to deal with that, and then you have the responsibility and the trust issue towards parents, and you're saying that your child, that we, you're allowing us to raise, basically, your child should have the opportunity to be in front of, to be certified a teacher that's highly qualified. And we can't always say that in Arizona, so there's that to look at as well. But that said, this grant has allowed Lake Havasu, even if I school district, to look at things differently, and it's caused me to reflect and possibly consider some changes in how we address our new teacher, our new teacher orientation program, how we're serving and supporting teachers, because we know why they leave the profession in droves, and we're trying to address that. Again, I'm grateful also, this community, because it did step up in, in passing our overhead, excuse me, our overhead and our bond, so there's the positive on that side as well, so we're going to try to go through this, I will have these two presenting here shortly, so I want to make sure they were acknowledged. I think this is a powerful statement, it goes back to that issue of trust. And teachers come into this profession now with this crisis at different levels of expertise, some have no background in education at all, so when they come in, they have never even heard of the lesson plan, they don't know what a behavior management plan looks like, they're totally lost, and fortunately, we have these two, or all the people that are being trained to address those issues. Again, when I was a former principal, I took this trust issue seriously, and if I had to have a conversation with a parent about a child, and they asked, you know, because mom's out there talk, and teachers have reputations, so there's always that great teacher at one school that everyone wants their child to experience, and sometimes you have teachers that don't have that reputation, they're still just as good, rumor has it, so as a former principal, I used to have to address that. And you'd have to look a parent in the eye and say, you know, I support this teacher, your child will be fine. And it's, that's becoming more difficult with, and the lowering of the standard of this profession. These two grants are allowing us actually to raise the standard, and we'll explain that as we go, but nonetheless, we consider this course very powerful. So again, back to the purpose of the Master Teacher and NT3, originally, this is our attempt to try to retain more teachers. At the bottom of that, you'll notice we had a 22% turnover in 2016 and 17, and 38% of our certified staff had less than three years' experience. That's, that's a tremendous amount of teachers that really need to have more training, more opportunity to learn and grow, so it makes it, again, a challenge. I wanted to read a couple things, and then I'm going to turn it over. This came from the Arizona Republic, if you don't mind for just a second. More than 1,000 teachers and more than 120 Arizona school districts and charter schools have been certified to teach tens of thousands of students through a certificate that requires no formal education training. The number of these certificates called Emergency Teaching Certificates eclipses the 789 certificates issued for all of last school year, according to the Department of Education, which was data obtained from the Arizona Republic. By mid-November, 1,035 certificates have been issued for this school year. The certificates require at least a bachelor's degree, allow the applicant to bypass nearly every state recertification department, and, excuse me, and put in place to ensure, got our put in place to ensure teachers are qualified to lead a classroom. And then the other thing that we're dealing with again, is teachers are leaving the profession in droves, and we know why, I mean, they're inadequate preparation, they come into the classroom, is one of the things, a lack of support that they get in general from other teachers, and sometimes leadership, challenging working conditions, I mean, you have to be an amazing person to teach today, it's very challenging. And then I think they get dissatisfied, okay, it's always an issue. And again, I'm grateful that we were able to secure these grants, these two are going to elaborate on what we're doing with them, and again, we're trying to address some things that we've never had to deal with before, and we think we will. So again-
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board, thank you again for having us here to talk about this. As Brad said, especially in Arizona, there's a national teacher crisis, but especially in Arizona, it's really exacerbated, and these two grants are allowing us to, like, help improve that situation. All right. So the two grants that we're going to discuss tonight, the first is the Master Teacher Grant, and the second is the NT3. I'm going to focus on Master Teacher, and then Kristy will speak to you about NT3. So if you look at this professional career continuum for teaching, this is kind of where teachers start, they begin as pre-service teachers, this is where we pick them up as, when they come to us, and we have our teacher induction program. First and second-year novice teachers, a professional teacher would be considered like T plus three, and then maybe that they would become board certified and maybe a teacher leave. So I'm going to speak to these beginning teachers, and what kind of support we can provide for them now. Okay, the purpose of the Master Teacher Grant in generality, the first is really to look at what are the specific needs of our teachers coming into us, because there's not a hand program that is going to address those particular people's needs, especially when you look at every hiring year is really different, and whether you're taking interns or specialists, people who are coming to us from industry, or those people who are coming to us as, like, second career teachers, or that they have already been trained in teaching. The second point speaks to the fact that what we are doing for mentors and mentees is grounded in research, so it's not just anecdotal in our feelings about what will create good teachers, but we know, research-based, what are the high-leverage practices that are going to support our teachers and provide real results, like, we don't have time to mess around. And then number three, this is, like, specifically, we would be providing their professional development classes, so we separate them by year one, two, and three, and then providing support to the mentors, so they can go back and provide support to the mentees, year one and year two, so everyone gets trained. Okay, this is the, like, how does this work, how is it organized? In the Master Teacher Grant, there are three of us Arizona Master Teacher mentors, I am primarily, since I started at secondary level, I work with Darnold-Boltz, and then the new teachers at the high school. Kristy works with the teachers at the elementary level, and Jan Esme focuses primarily on our after-school professional development learning. That does not mean that we all don't collaborate, we're like a little team, but this is how we are still delineating duties, so we're organized. Okay, let's look at some of the results of the professional development piece, because there's really two pieces of the Master Teacher mentor. So the first part of it is, we provide professional learning series seminars, this is after-school professional development for year one, year two, and mentor teachers. So we have 31 year-one mentor teachers that have come to these learning seminars, 29 year-two teachers, and 52 mentor teachers. So we are, when we're focusing on the mentor teachers, is helping them think about what reflective practices are they trying to impart, and specifically, when they're working with their year-one and year-two teachers, what are those high-leverage practices, things that we want them to be focusing on and doing. And then, of course, the six pre-candidacy teachers in the third year, if they wanted to go on and, like, improve their training, so we know that Arizona certification is like the entry-level certification into the profession of teaching, so now you can be a teacher. If you want to be an accomplished teacher who's an expert at your practice and your craft, then you continue, like, your own professional development, and this is just one way that they can do that. That is optional, of course. These are some of the reflections from those teachers, just some qualitative data, so we try to track, we want to know, just like if we were classroom teachers, we want to know if the objectives we're setting are being met by students, or where they're at, and so, in almost everything we do, we are asking them for data back, how, how is this going, what can we continue to support you with? So the first bubble is from a year-one teacher, she says, I realize that I need to widen my use of thinking maps, Brad really likes this one, and other activities, we all like this one, and teach and read vocabulary, which is powerful, whereas for a year-one teacher, maybe this is a person who's coming to education with no education background and didn't know that these were actual strategies that could be used, and now they do. The second one from a year-two, this is when they're using their professional learning plan, this is an individualized goal setting that they work on, so it is not us telling them as a year-two teacher, we think you need this, 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 it is their own reflection, these are the goals I would like to work on in my classroom, and then we're supporting their protocol procedures through that book. So he says, students benefit when I engage in conversations about teaching practice, the more I learn, the better I become for them as an educator and facilitator of knowledge, amen, yes. And then lastly, is from a mentor teacher, these are the standards that mentor teachers are using, and these are, there's a tool that comes with this that helps them to ask those reflective questions to their mentees, and it says, the NT3 standards help guide and structure our conversations, it allows mentees to be accountable, provide evidence of the things they're doing well, and more importantly, it helps us both reflect to see so we can make progress. So it's this idea that if you just put a mentee in a mentor in a room, they have a conversation about teaching that is unstructured, you will get less results than having a structured conversation, just like good teaching practice, good mentor practice follows right along with that. Okay, so that was the first part of the Master Teacher Grant, was the professional learning series. The second part of it is what Kristy and I are doing in our days, spent looking into teachers' ads and having conversations with them. So these are our meetings and observations, and as you can see, so far, we've completed 163 face-to-face contacts, 366 hours with our 24 first-year brand-new teachers. Working with new teachers in this capacity is so powerful, so this is the first time that I've done this, so I mean, I feel like a first-year teacher in a sense, it's my first time working in this capacity, but it has been incredible for me to see that when you follow those high-leverage practices, you focus on the training that Kristy and I have gone to, really focused on, what should your conversations look like, what should they sound like, how do you move the teacher forward? And I've had a lot of success with that, in taking my own advice that I give to new teachers, which is, let's focus on one small thing at a time, and it's one goal, and you keep moving on this one, looks chunkier, the way that you chunk their learning, and chunk for students, you chunk for teachers too, and it's just been, and, okay. Lastly, these are some of the results of our professional development that Kristy and I have undergone, so we needed support in order to support the mentors, the mentees, we needed some training in order to do that effectively, and we've been getting that through mentor academies, where we practice what those coaching conversations look like, and where are the high-leverage practices, what should we be doing with them to get the most bang for our buck, when we only have limited time with them. We've gone to Arizona New Teacher Network, where you meet other mentors who are really successful and get to share information, and also gone to Master Teacher Mentor forums. So, the Master Teacher focused on the newest members of our profession, in a way that NT3 Grant shifts and focuses more on the accomplished teachers that we have already, everyone wants professional development and to learn and grow. Now, now let Kristy talk about that.
All right, Madam President, members of the governing board, good evening. The NT3 Grant is a federal grant, it's a one-year grant, and it really has three aims for all of these districts that are receiving this federal funding. The three aims are to strengthen the support new teachers receive, so that they can be on that trajectory toward accomplished practitioners, to integrate the standards for accomplished practice into teachers' work and their school day, so it becomes a natural part of their conversation, and finally, to leverage that instructional expertise of accomplished teachers so that they can provide professional learning for the novice teachers. What we've done is, we've taken those three federal aims, and we've really focused them on the low- on the local needs of Lake Havasu's teachers. And some of the things that we have done to create a systemic professional development trajectory are to embed those five core propositions into our induction mentoring programs. We encourage teachers after year three to seek National Board Certification as a choice for their professional development, and we're working to develop a trajectory of teacher leadership. It's really our vision to develop this trajectory of teacher leadership for a couple of reasons. This trajectory enables us not only to attract new teachers to this district, to support them, and retain them. When we embed these five core propositions into all of our professional development in this district, all of our teachers develop a greater understanding of what accomplished teaching looks like. This enables them to deepen their practice to meet that target. And most importantly, it provides access to high-quality teachers for every single student in this district. We don't want teachers to be the luck of the draw anymore. We don't want students to get lucky being in a certain teacher's classroom. We want every student in this district to get lucky with every teacher that they have, from K through 12. And it's our belief that if teachers are engaged in this trajectory of professional development, this trajectory of professional leadership, they're going to stay in the teaching So one of the results that we have accomplished through the NT3 Grant is embedding these five core propositions into the professional development for year ones, year twos, year threes, and mentor teachers. This develops our common language and our understanding of accomplished teaching. This grant has provided us the resources to achieve this goal. And I think when you read these five core propositions, these are the teachers that you would want for your students, these are the teachers that you would want for your kids, your nieces, your nephews. We want teachers who are committed to students and their learning, who know the subject matter and how to teach that subject matter to students, who are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, who think systematically and reflectively and always are willing to improve their practice, and are members of learning communities. So here are some of our numbers. Here are some of the things that we have been able to accomplish since last year. Last year, we had eight National Board candidates in our district. This weekend, three of them certified. So now we have a total of 15 NBCTs in this school, in this district. This year, seven school sites have cohorts of National Board candidates. In other words, there's more than one candidate in each of those schools. We have 27 candidates this year, which is almost, not quite, but almost a 250% increase in National Board candidates. Through this grant, we've been able to send these candidates to professional development, National Board institutes, workshops, Coaching Saturdays, and small group meetings. Just like Jenny alluded to, even the most seasoned veterans in our district are hungry for professional development, and this is one opportunity for them to get that. Nationally, 3% to 4% of teachers are National Board certified. If all 27 of our current candidates eventually certify, we will boast a 17% National Board Certified teacher rate. That's pretty impressive. Now, our hope is that as these teachers become National Board certified, and they go on that trajectory toward accomplished teaching, that they want to serve as mentors, because there's no mistaking the power of mentorship. Most importantly, students gain up to five months of additional learning when they're with new teachers who get high-quality mentoring. Five months. When new teachers have strong mentorship, strong support from administration and from other teachers, they are three to four times more likely to remain in their district. And finally, teachers who have received strong mentorship are better at analyzing student work and adjusting their teaching practice accordingly. So we would like to thank all of the building-level principals, the district administration, Michelle Yusso for her work with this grant, Mr. Gardner's leadership, Mrs. LeSire's vision for this trajectory of teacher leadership, and finally, Madam President, members of the governing board, we could not do this work without your support. This is powerful for teachers, but ultimately, this impacts students. So thank you for your support of these grants.
The good ground.
Wow, how did that happen? So, any questions?
Christie, you know what? Two questions. One, the percentage of teachers, say, three years and beyond, what percentage of those pursue their board certification? And the second question is, is it more of the teachers with, say, three to five to seven years as opposed to teachers that are maybe 10 years and beyond experience?
I don't know the answer to the first question, but I can find out. I'm not sure how many actually pursuing year four. Do you mean within the district or?
Right, within the district.
I can find out those numbers. Historically, it was teachers who had 10-plus years of experience who decided to pursue National Board Certification, but now, these five core propositions are becoming embedded into pre-service classes for teachers, education classes, and so now, teachers with four and five years of experience are seeking board certification. So we are seeing that interest in board certification a lot earlier in the teachers' teaching career.
And I know people look at me and say, "Oh, against grants," and that's not true. I think this is wonderful work. But do we have documentation on things like, we said, five core propositions? Evaluation of those teachers? Do we have tests? Do we have record books? Do we have anything that shows the progress an individual teacher has made?
So part of the training that we get when we are going to those mentor academies, mentor training, is we use a tool through New Teacher Center. They're the ones who they track all of the improvements that teachers are making so that they can use this research. And we keep track of teacher goals and then when those are met and achieved.
Well, we have that recorded, right?
So we do.
So if you guys die, somebody else can get it.
Yes. We're not going to die. I eat a lot of kale. But I know exactly what you are saying, and what you are saying is what we both believe, which is that quality, creating quality teachers in our district can't be the mission of just this one singleton teacher. It has to become a systematic practice that is just part of what we do, and another person could come in and carry that same work on.
She really is a silver-tongued wonder, isn't she?
So yes, we are doing that.
Another question I've got for you. Are we keeping records? For instance, you said three to four times more likely to stay with the district. Are we keeping records years to years showing the effectiveness of these programs?
We will be. So this is the, right, so this is the inception year of the Master Teacher Grant and the NT3, but it is our goal to look at that data and see if these things are being effective in retention. Ultimately, that goal.
I would like to interject, our original goal here was the retention piece, but I want that to be clear, that we're trying to retain effective teachers. There's a difference. There are some teachers that actually need to leave. So it's retention of effective teachers.
Well, I mean, however we gauge it, whatever gauge we have, we need a yearly gauge. We need to be able to see what we're gaining. That's all I'm saying. You know? The problem I have, and people talk to me about grants, the problem I have with grants is quite often you get a grant, but then you later, a year later, two years later, you can't tell what that grant led you into or what you accomplished, right? And I just want to see that we've got it documented and that we can show the outcomes. That's one concern.
Right, that there's longevity and purpose to it.
I agree.
I think that Mr. Gardner's point too is that raw numbers of teachers who leave is not necessarily reflective of the effectiveness or lack thereof of the grant.
But you can show your trend.
So some teachers leave because they aren't successful in the profession and they've decided to move on, but others, you know, it needs to be delineated which category they fall into and affect that name.
There are raw numbers, won't, but you can get trend lines. And the trend lines will give you an idea of how effective you are.
So I guess, tagging into what Allen said, how are we quantifying this data? Are we doing classroom observation? And once we quantify it, how is that recorded and stored, regurgitated and compared over a year into that teacher's performance?
Well, so what we are doing is not tied to their evaluation in any way. So that is a really big part of it, is that there's a trust piece where when we are working with them in a mentor capacity, that is not part of the evaluation that principals are doing through their coaching. Right, but to answer the first part of your question, I think that the data piece is collected through the New Teacher Center tool. So every classroom that we go in, every face-to-face interaction, every observation gets tagged with, what was the purpose of this? Were we focusing on classroom environment, instructional strategy, assessment? And then you can track that data, you can generate reports or charts, you can see how many observations this teacher had, or is that?
I'm looking to how we measure success. What is a victory? Is it simply teacher retention by a certain percentage? Is it improvement in classroom instruction? How do we quantify what we're getting out of this grant?
Well, teacher retention has so many aspects that there isn't one silver bullet that is going to solve the teacher retention issue. Does this help retain teachers? We sure hope so. We're five months in right now. We certainly hope it does.
And naturally, the data shows that it does. So when they look at the reasons that teachers leave, teachers leave the profession, pay is certainly one of them, but pay is not something that is in my control or influence, but the support that new teachers receive is. So I guess that is where we're directing our focus.
But what does the success of this program look like in a goal-measure system of initiative? What do we physically look for to make sure that this is kind of success?
Do you look at the success of the students? Success of students and improved teacher practice. Now, we are evaluators, but that improved teacher practice can be seen through the lens.
We're keeping track of all the, yeah, every, we track everything that we take, every one of those interactions.
So as this program matures over the next two and a half years, we should be able to have a report down the road that says, because of this, these were our outcomes.
I've got a question and an idea, just an idea. My question is, I saw it said 102 substitute hours for pure evaluation. I don't understand that. There's something I don't...
One of the high-leverage practices is pure observation, teachers observing effective teaching practice. And because we have site-based mentors through the grant, we've been able to secure substitutes so that a mentor teacher can go in and observe a new teacher, and a new teacher can go in and observe a mentor teacher as well. So that's where those substitute hours come in.
Okay, I might want to look at that then. The other thing was just a suggestion, right? You're talking about evaluations. I'm sure that all of our classes use benchmarks at the beginning and the end of the year. And one way you might look at these teachers is what was the improvement in their benchmark scores? Something that you might consider.
You could also look at their evaluation scores too, from their first evaluation to their second evaluation, and see if they had personal growth or improvement.
I think there can be multiple measurements. And an example is really, you put an outstanding teacher in a classroom, and one of the first things that begins to happen is those kids really get turned on to education, and their scores are going to go up. Another thing that's going to happen is because of classroom management practices, they're not going to be sending those kids down to the principal. So I'm not concerned about if there's measurements, there's multiple measurements. You know what it's like with citizenship? That's going to be a measurement. And those, and to me, those are measurements that are very clear because that's who you're dealing with. The idea of this whole program is done with teachers so that they're really good at what they, they're really professionals. I'll give you an example. When I got out of college, you go to the College of Education, it's all ideal. Where did we learn back then? When we walked into the classroom. And how did we learn? It was hit or miss. And fortunately, some teachers that were very experienced took the time to say, "Look, these are the best practices. This is what we'll do." And it was hit or miss, but this is a program, and now what you're saying is, "Look, we've got a program that can get those things done." So I'm excited about this. Looking back in my own experience, I wish I had had that when I started out. And, you know, and if we retain them, that's wonderful. But you know one other thing? I find out that people that are very good at what they do, other places attract them, and they're very ambitious people. So when they go on, I've known a number of outstanding teachers that have gone on to be administrators in schools. So it doesn't mean you're going to keep them. But the thing is, the time that they're there, they make a big impact. It never bothered me when these, it bothered me when I'd get a call on an outstanding teacher, I'd say, "I don't want this call." But the time that they were here in Lake Havasu, they made a big impact on kids, and I could mention their names, and I'd really shortchange some people, but I think this is really a step in the right direction as a board member. And I think you won't have any trouble this year.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I mean, I think it's a great program. The only thing I'm concerned about is with the amount of money that goes into this program and the teachers that are involved in it, working as hard as they're working, we want to be able to see what the progress is. We want to be able to see what we're accomplishing. That's all I'm saying.
And you know, like you say, when they go to another class and they see this, it's visible. They're walking in to what they're doing, and they see this, these real good teachers. You know, another thing is videotaping the thing. I had a teacher years ago, he said, "If you want to decide how teacher-dominated the class is, just have a tape recorder and tape record your lesson." And it was an eye-opener, but you have all these things that are really happening in education now that I think are going to, you know, really... education now that I think are going to, you know, really do a good job.
Well, and as a recruiter, I just want to say that when I'm talking with teacher candidates, they're becoming very savvy because they are able to pick and choose where they want to go now with this teacher shortage that we have. And one of the first two questions they ask me when I'm out on recruiting trail is, do you have mentors and how will you support them? And so this is a feather in our cap to be able to share this program when we're out on recruiting trail because that, those are two questions that they immediately ask us when we're out on the trail now.
And don't misunderstand, I'm not here saying the program is bad or anything like that. I want to make sure though, that if we're going, if we're in the middle of doing this, that we're doing this and that we're getting actual good quantifiable results. Because if you say, yeah, we've got mentors and we're not going through the program and we're not quantifying our results, speaking of all the mentors in the world, if we're not calling mentors, you're, you're going to fall out through the floor. And so, and it depends on market, do you want your results?
And you want to, may just sound a couple of things here. In the, in the mentor role, while we are keeping a lot of data, that data is support data for teachers. And so that's not shared because they need to feel like they're giving that support confidentially and they're going to take that as part of it. On the other hand, we have administrators who are doing observations, who are collecting data about their observations, and they're quantifying that data as well so they can see improvement. And that would be reflected in their teacher's evaluations. And so that would be quantifiable to some degree. In the first year, for example, and please will kind of correct me if I'm wrong, but for first-year teachers, to meet their three oh one goal is to participate in this program because they are, they are truly exploring their craft in the first year and beginning to perfect it really in year two of, of new teacher. And now with some of the lack of experiences that they had coming in, it's even more than that. And so in, in terms of that quantifiable piece, some of that would be in year two had they met their three oh one goals at their sites. So they've been able to do those things, that would be aligned to the student results, et cetera. And then on the, on the opposite side of that is, the retention piece, and Pat kind of, Mr. Rooney addressed this a little bit, is are those teachers who are effective, are they staying with us and feeling like they're supporting and wanting to stay with us? And on the other side of that, if we've given them an opportunity to improve their craft and they are not improving, are we in fact not re-electing them, letting them go? Because we don't want teachers who are not interested in becoming, averaging better than average, certainly. And so we, in, in the two years that I've been out and walking through classrooms, there are classrooms where there are good mentors and the teacher's not interested in implementing those ideas, and they won't be back. And, you know, those are the, the pieces of data that will connect this, but it's really hard to, to, to gather it up and say, you know, and, and quantify it. But I think on an individual basis, we could really easily identify, these are the teachers who showed improvement, we had, you know, 75 we did it, we had 35 we didn't, we have, you know, those are the kinds of things we could do.
That's kind of what I'm, that's kind of the thing.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I just wanted to say, you know, if in fact, people in the room here, if you factor out the principals and the teachers, there's only a handful of people here. And having a daughter who's earned the certification, thanks primarily to Christie, excuse me, Christie, it's, it's really, it's difficult to get this word out to the community as to how intensive this National Board Certification Program is. I had a physician who talked to my daughter when she was going through it, and he said his medical boards were easier than getting the certification. And it's, and people don't understand how intensive this program is. A lot of people hear certification, you just think, oh, you do a couple of things online and get certification. And Ginny and Christie and the other teachers here that have that understand that it's, that's not the case. And it'd really be nice if more people in the community knew how difficult it is to earn the certification.
I'd just like to add that in the past, we had coaches at each site, but, you know, the funding dried out and that went away. That was huge for us. This is now replacing that, but we used to have one coach for all teachers at a school. And now we have many because that's what they're creating. The coaching that they, that they're teaching, that they're using is much like the coaching that we went through as, as interventionist and educational coaches. And it's really, now we're having a network of coaches at each of the schools. So I'm just thankful for that. It's huge. Collaboration is huge.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Yeah, both.
And that's a great one. On the screen, Jim. So that's where we hear from Carol Mount House, County of Haverstew City Association.
I'll stand over here. Then that would have to turn this one to the standard. All right. Um, well, let's see, or countdown, right? Two days, two, three days. LHTA or, and the Education Association, where are we right now? Currently, we are looking for names for grants and scholarships for students, members, community members, and for recognition. So that's what we're in the process of. We have, like last year, we had our football team, we took a thousand dollars, and we had a couple other recipients, scholarship recipients of members and such. We also just finished our three, our four-city gubernatorial debates. So one in Flagstaff, Yuma, Phoenix, and Tucson. And they went really well. I think over a thousand people showed up altogether, so they felt that that was very successful. And I say that because the next time we meet, legislation will be in session. So with that said, there is, we live here in rural Arizona, there is a request to speak program. We can log in here, and even though we are not there to speak, we can share our voice. So you can oppose, or you can say yes or no to any bill that's out there. You just have to log in and you say yes or no. And so it is recorded, so even though you are not there, you can still have a voice. So that's something that I think we need to be really aware of.
Do you have to sign up here, or don't you have to sign up at the Capitol in order to log on here?
I think you can actually now sign up. I will look more into that, but I think there's a video on how to sign up now.
Here.
Like I think we can sign up. In the past, we could only sign up at the Capitol. I think now we might be able to sign up.
I think you can do it online.
That's what I thought. I think we can now do it online.
That's the way they made it sound, yeah.
Yes. And in two weeks, there is a march at the Capitol on the sixth that I plan on attending. And I would love, if you're lucky to join me, if you could, it is a Saturday before we return. It is for our Saver Schools group. And then we also have a pledge form that is out there. I've sent it out, we've sent it out, we posted it. It's for the Arizona Strong Public Schools, and I pledge to support strong public schools. So that's the things that are on the agenda right now. And I'm just happy it's posted because next month they'll start getting busy.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Right of motion? To approve of the...
I move that we approve. Can I just talk?
Yes.
Start asking?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Wood?
Yes.
Nicole Poehl?
Yes.
Okay, under old business, 5.1, second presentation and review of policy IJMDV, using technology or resources in instruction. This is my... Madam President, you may take the floor. The board members of the board approve the second presentation. Kathy Poehl?
Yes.
Nicole Poehl?
Yes. I have 6.1, a 2017-18 parent and community engagement plan. And Mrs. Walter's not here, so we, oh, is that me? Yes, thank you. That is a sign.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the board approve the district's 2017 Parent and Community Engagement Plan. Parent and community support, as we know, are integral to the academic discourse and are greatly valued by our district. Our district has had a PACE committee in place and have developed this plan. And the Parent and Community Engagement Plan actually is a mandatory yearly compliance requirement for child around the schools and is available for parents to access. I did, based on our conversation at the last meeting, did find out a little bit more information. And the, the Parent Engagement Plan must be submitted to ADE separately from our actual local education advocacy plan, which I've just lost the name of completely in my brain. IAP Integrated Action Plan, thank you. And so at this point in time, we did submit these separate plans to the state for the federal compliance for our PACE plans. What we talked about and will be meeting on in January is the idea that as opposed to developing a separate parent-community engagement plan in the future, that that could be part of component six of our district's integrated action plans, and then that could be just lifted out and submitted separately until some point in the future where the state allows us to include it in the plan for submission. But essentially, they, they, the same rules apply. And so that would be our plan for the future in relation to PACE plan.
Flat of motion for 6.1?
I make a motion for group 6.1 as listed.
Second.
Is Sarah here? Okay. Sheila, Sheila's girl. Oh, okay. And then I was just going to read off my list of things that we should look at in the future. So my biggest concern, and I noticed this in a few different places, we have a mission statement for the PACE plan. Each school, each school in our district, I notice, has a mission statement, and then the district has a mission statement. So I think that it's hard to be unified when everybody has a different mission statement. But I do appreciate that Haverstew High used the new district mission statement in this plan. The community piece of this plan, I guess, is considered standard six, which was the listing of all the community members that are, you know, volunteering in our schools. But I would like to see part of the community as part of the engagement on the front end, not after the plan is done, participating in the plan because there's really no community representative. So I don't know if that looks like a board member, if there's somebody from the community, however you want to pick that. Go ahead.
I was going to say that part of this process now will be through school-based councils, which do have community representation. And at, at each of our sites, they have invited the larger community, and they have these discussions as well.
Okay. Then I, I did have questions and concerns, and I did, I did ask Abby at the work session, where the purpose of plan came from. So there's a bunch of principals here, does anybody know where the purpose of plan came from, or do you?
I do not know.
Okay. Because it seems odd. I'm finding one of them, they're all the same. Volunteering, purpose of the plan. The planning process and parent-community engagement plan is designed to help facilitate systemic change in the entire educational program of Lake Haverstew Unified School District. That's a concern for me because I really don't know what that means, but it makes me a little nervous. So I, I would like to be focused on what the purpose of the plan is in the future, even if we're going to do it differently. I wondered, I know that last year it was not PACE, it was a PIT plan, Parent Engagement Plan, right?
Parent Engagement.
Oh, PIT, PIT. PIT was before that, right? Parent Engagement Plan, it went from PIT to PACE. Okay.
I would want to make a discussion about that.
Okay.
It might have been before.
It might have been before. But did we identify what was working and what wasn't, and how we were engaging? So that would be, I know there's lots of boxes in the plan to keep track of how we're engaging the parent, but is it working? So year after year, because they've called it a few things, but we've had the same thing for a long time, right? Everybody... Do we have an official policy on a family engagement plan? I know we have community, it's like a one-liner, but I didn't know if there was like an official policy.
I think we do have a community policy.
But it's a board policy or just, okay, it's not just a policy for the committee?
Correct. And then there are separate Title I guidelines that are in relation to, I did, should put that out in terms of what must be in the family, parent family engagement plan. I'm okay with that.
I have that too. I do have that. And I do appreciate that they made updates too. The only concern left, I guess, is, let me check those notes. So math activities, I noticed that in the presentation and throughout the book, but math activities is different than parent and grandparent math night, where you're teaching them. When it's an activity, it's different than teaching a parent or grandparent how to do math so that they can help their student at home do math, especially for the grandparents. And me and myself, that would be difficult for me.
Right. And I would, for a lot of principal personnel, that they would probably know a lot about those, the actual content of those things.
Okay. Okay. And then the, the last thing is, when we look at this piece next year, was there any reason that we use the ETA national standards for family-school partnerships? And if there wasn't, maybe that could be discussed before, you know, we do it again. So would that be the next?
Kind of struck me that at the elementary school level, they had such a diversity of, of thought on how to undertake in the presentation. It would seem to me that if we are a unified school district, that we would have a base level of this is what each school does, that wouldn't be differentiated, and then they would each have their own level of change against it. So their own unique little identifying event or, or function. Just kind of, kind of struck me that, that, you know, some have science night, some have math night, some have combined math and science. It just didn't seem like we had this base level where we had everybody on the same page district-wide.
Well, I think different schools have different goals based on test scores and whatever, so I think that's why they, some do, you know, less, some do not. I get what you're saying.
I almost sort of disagree with you, but there should be, in my mind, there should be a longer list of maybe three or four things that are delineated in common amongst all the schools.
I think there's a peripheral benefit to that too. My kid is going to one school, this kid's going to another school, and my kid has got an accident, let's say, in math, this kid's got a rapidity in science. We have nothing really discussed with each other. And I'm saying if there's just a base number of things that are practiced the same, now we can have an interaction between parents from different schools. How did your school approach the science better? My school did this. Can I just share what I saw?
And actually, I do recall last year when they were preparing the presentation, because that was when I was still learning a little bit more about it. There were some things that were the same, like everybody's plan. And so, we totally pulled all that out and consolidated those out of the list, because these are the things that we already did and then included in the list, only the things that they did differently. And so, I didn't see that in this presentation. And I do recall that from last year. We do have some things that we all do. You just didn't get to hear nothing, right? Right. And I know that there's a plan for every letter in the alphabet that is mandated somewhere between the feds and the state. So, I understand, you know, that some of these things have to be done. We just need to work to kind of streamline and do as few of them as possible, so we can just go.
Okay.
Take this plan and submit it here, just like you said. I hope there's no other questions or comments. Pat O'Leary?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Probst?
Yes.
John Madsen?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen? Okay, 6.2, approval of new courses and classrooms at Lake Haverstow High School for the 2018-19 school year. Mr. Besser?
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended that the Government Board approve the attached list of new courses and classroom changes for the 2018-2019 school year at Lake Haverstow High School. Rationale and causes are listed there along with course descriptions that follow any or chapter as well.
Do I have a motion to approve 6.2?
I make a motion that we postpone 6.2 until it can be proposed in five separate parts.
Well, I thought he was saying that I just, he was referring to the rationale, and I was trying to give some. I thought he was going to the discussion part, so I was trying to get it on the table to discuss.
That's what, that was my intention.
Okay. I'm glad you were presenting that first.
No, I was going through it like we wanted.
He didn't want to read through the entire rationale. He was trying to save himself. I'm sorry if I, I mean, how, Mr. Ward.
I make a motion to postpone 6.2 with further consideration when it can be resolved in five separate parts. And I'm glad to discuss that after the vote.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, five seconds. Well, now, we have a little discussion now. He made a motion, he made a motion to amend this.
He seconded.
He seconded it, so now we can discuss it.
Okay. I'll tell you my rationale behind this motion. First of all, I have some serious questions about some of these course changes. But I don't have serious questions about all the course changes. So, you put me in a position where if I vote yes, I'll approve something I don't approve of. And if I don't approve no, I'm canceling out things I might approve of. The second thing is, this contains a section on reduced fees. I know this would never be intentional. But I don't think it's proper for us to have reduced fees presented, attached to a curriculum agenda item, placing the board members in a position where if I don't like one of the curriculum items, I'm forced to look at my constituents and say, oh, I voted against fee reductions. If I do like them, but I don't like the fee reductions, now I'm caught on the other side of the corner. This should be presented separately, because I don't think anybody up here would ever complain about a fee reduction. But we might not want these particular courses changed. And you place us in an enormously tenuous position to have to vote on that. So, I suggest, like I said, that we postpone it and just come back, look at each one of these things individually, discuss them, and vote on them.
I have a timeline.
I'd be working on it tomorrow to get it to do anywhere. Because we have sent counselors on into classrooms in February, already involving kids, selecting classes for next year.
I don't understand why we can't discuss this tonight. Why do we keep on discussing this tonight?
Maybe we have to be thorough.
No, I gotta ask. And I don't know why we needed, why we couldn't have had a discussion of this tonight instead of having a motion to postpone. We could possibly get this resolved here tonight. He has a timeline.
So, let's discuss some of the concerns in it while we're in a discussion period.
Well, one concern is this conceptual chemistry. You know, the current standards that are articulated at us teaching physical science, and it has six separate concepts of six separate areas of study. Conceptual chemistry, and I pulled it up off the internet, is basically, well, I'll read what, read what was said by one organization. "Conceptual chemistry builds a conceptual base for which students make new nature more perceptibly by helping them visualize the behavior of atoms and molecules and showing how this behavior gives rise to our macroscopic environment. Numerical problem-solving skills and memorization are not stressed. Instead, chemistry concepts are developed in a storytelling fashion through the frequent use of analogies and tightly-integrated illustrations. Follow-up end-of-chapter questions are designed to challenge students' understanding of concepts and their ability to synthesize and articulate conclusions." And it's used worldwide. Well, physical science has a, a section, a concept, that addresses chemistry. It also has five other concepts that addresses. And it provides a broad-based study of science. Conceptual chemistry is focusing on chemistry. And as old and as unprepared as I am for this current education system, it's obvious that what it is, it's to prepare students to be able to pass the next chemistry class, which is college entrance. And I'll also say this, being, having been a teacher at one time, having six preps, it'd be a lot easier to have this as a prep than have the other ones as a prep, if I'm gonna teach chemistry anyway. I just don't think we should replace it. I think physical science has a place. It was put into the system to give a broad-based range of knowledge to all students, not just to those that are gonna take chemistry.
Okay, this is how I look at it. Your integrated science, maybe when you, let Mr. Becker first, let us know if there's a rationale for it.
Okay.
So, there's, there's a couple of things in this came about. And I know all of this is outside of school letter grades and the way that that's handled by the state. But when I said as a principal, one of the things that I think is the most powerful out of what they presented to us was the self-reporting part that I had to fill out as a principal. And I cannot take credit for it, Sarah worked on it. I had our CTE director working on it, and all of our counseling staff gathering this data. And there's 21 indicators on this college and career readiness indicator sheet that is attached to our school letter grade at the high school level. So, the first field, when you look at one of those 21 columns, is A-BoR certification, or A-BoR meets A-BoR standards. Part of that is lab sciences, where we fell short for students, and the second year of the foreign language. So, I went to my science department and challenged them, how can we get kids on the right path to where they are able to attain that in science? I did the same thing with our spec.
And they all work together, even though that energy, that's just, there's just the concept of energy, whether it's in an atom or where it is. I mean, you can say that gravity causes some kind of energy happening. And modeling and change and looking at patterns. I mean, this, this kind of concept applied to all of these classes. I just, I think it's wonderful, a wonderful introduction to fresh, for freshman science for these kinds of kids. And then you move to conceptual chemistry, and look what they're getting. These, I'm Hey Mom, guess what Grandma? I'm in chemistry. I'm taking chemistry. And for some kids like me who love science, but I couldn't do the math, I would have had a science career. I could, I just couldn't do the math. So, I would have loved to have done something like this and I was able to graduate from college. I mean, I was smart enough to, you know, keep going on for a while. And I just think this is a wonderful course. It's much richer than what we're offering these kids right now. What right now, these kids are, it's a dead end for them as far as science goes. And I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a great idea and that the fact that lab science, hey, wow, that's, that's the cream icing on top.
Neither one of those is a lab science.
Would it be fair to say?
Oh, neither one is a lab science, definitely.
Would it be fair to say that perhaps the replacement language at the bottom is a bit misleading? Aren't we really taking physical science and making it integrated science?
That's what I thought.
And then, and then we're taking the life science class out and we're changing that conceptual chemistry?
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think, I think that's where the, where we get down this rabbit hole is, is I think that, that really we could just turn those to replacements around.
Right. And this should say, you know, freshman class or something and metallics there because when parents look at that, I don't think they're going to understand. And certainly this will come before this, when you get your book done.
Well, I personally think we're changing courses without a reason. I really believe there's no justification. That's just my belief. That the other courses served us well. We have a problem with what our students are learning, obviously, but that doesn't have anything to do with the courses themselves. And they've been in place for a long time throughout the entire school system. And I may get voted down here, but I'll say exactly what I said to a principal of the school one time. The way to keep me from being "I told you so" was listen the first time. I think you're making a serious mistake.
So, the life sciences.
So, the integrated science is really going to be replacing our life science and physical science as well as offering them physics and earth science and ecology biology concepts that they can then take into next level classes. The conceptual chem is giving those kids that don't have the math background, the opportunity to take a chemistry class and introducing them to those concepts. And that will. So, we would still be teaching the physical science as well as life science, but offering those kids in eighth grade that took physical science and failed, giving them some other exposure to different sciences that maybe interest them and could maybe keep their interest to other classes. Instead of sticking them in the exact same course the next year, exact same standards and they're not being successful.
So, if I may clarify then, on the chart, there's three yellow boxes. Should there be a fourth yellow box that says integrated science for freshmen?
Yes, that should be for freshmen as well.
So, the integrated science is going to have both the physical science and the life science.
As well as earth.
If that's the case, do you think that there will be something missing from that? Yes?
I'd have to see, I'd have to see the curriculum and the, and the lessons that they intend to teach. Because what's going to happen is either they'll be focused on what the instructor wants to teach. Here we have, here we have specific concepts and POs for each of these areas that a good teacher has to teach or should teach. And if they're teaching them, it's a broad-based science.
Right.
Do we have that developed for the integrated science?
We've been waiting for a course approval. We are basing it off of the exact same science standards that we have. We would be touching based on all of that. We're not doing away with the standard.
It would also be important to look and see what actual standards they are taking in the eighth grade as well. Because if it's a repeat.
It is a repeat. It's the exact same course.
Does that at all satisfy you?
No, but that's only one board member.
Well, I understand that, but you're a board member that has concerns about it, so.
I still think, I still think we need this particular motion to be broken. Because I don't want to vote for a reduction in fees at the same time I vote on a course.
Well, I understand your point and I agree with you. However, because of the timeline he has, could we compromise and say that, starting next year, that this will be submitted separately for the fee changes? And go ahead and see what happens to your motion and then move on from there? And if, if someone makes the motion to take this as submitted, then, and it passes, then he can go ahead and do what he needs to do to move forward.
Well, actually, if we want to do what he needs to do to move forward, John needs to withdraw his second and Mr. Ward needs to.
Or you can just vote it.
I just, I just call the question.
Or we can vote now. But then that pushes it out till January.
The motion is postponed.
The motion is tabled, so if you know you're not tabling it, then you can now then vote on that.
And I, and I call for the question.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
No.
John Madison?
No.
Pat Rooney?
No.
Nicole Cullen?
I would move that we, actually, a point, point of clarification, is it within the scope of a motion to split an agenda item into two pieces?
No.
Okay. And I move that we accept six to present it.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Madison?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
No.
Nicole Cullen?
Yes.
I have a question. The people in the back, you're the science teachers, right?
I'm the head of the science.
How are the kids that are coming up from the eighth grade, are they well-versed in science? What, I get the feeling that they're arriving at the high school and they're, they're having difficulty. Is that true on everything?
It depends on the students. Those that are coming up with the math foundation, going into biology and honors biology, they're doing well. The kids that are coming in and retaking physical science or going into life science, they're lacking that math foundation, but that's starting down in kindergarten.
Okay, but I guess what I'm saying, if it's starting someplace, and articulation has always been a big thing in the district, it just seems to me that those things will be addressed. Because if they're not addressed, you're going to still be getting that type of a student up at the high school. I'm not saying everyone's going to be good in math, but I'm saying that a lot of, you know, we have a unified school district, and so that information should be passed back down to where you're getting the students.
It is. We have, the past couple of years, we do a vertical articulation meeting. Every year, science meets, high school science teachers meet with Thunderbolt and math teachers as well, and we articulate down through seventh grade. I don't know if it goes from seventh grade below. But we do have a running list of the skills that the students are lacking, and we've been working on that over time. And so, we're starting to see a trend of that population being smaller, but we're still having that influx of students.
How, how much of this is, is being pushed by, by standard changes within the state?
Well, not on our behalf. Ours is student achievement and opening up the avenues for those students.
But I mean, I mean, as far as the lack of math preparedness and that type of.
The kids arriving not prepared.
I don't know how much of it's in math. I know in science, we haven't had standard change, so it's kind of been just like laxadaisical and we just, it's hard to improve.
Do you see an issue because there's so much of a focus on ELA in math, like there is in the social sciences?
So, I've been in the district for 12 years and I worked the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. And I know there's not, it's not like math where it builds upon itself. It's very chunked and broken up. So, one year you're doing earth science in fourth grade and the next year you're doing cells, and it's not concurrent. So, we're getting kids now in high school and they've had a little bit here, a little bit there, and it's not, it's hard in science because it's not concurrent.
Unless it requires math.
This is where my question came up. Is it, are we, are we right to be changing courses? Or should we be looking at what we're not doing right?
We're, yeah.
And I really question whether, I mean, because we could change courses. Next time, we change some here, next time we change some there. But that doesn't solve the problem that the students aren't getting the information.
Let me ask.
And these courses have been in place for how many years? Does anybody remember when life sciences wasn't part of the curriculum?
Well, they still get that with biology, but that is a lab science.
I have a question. What percentage of our freshmen are coming up having to take like now life science and then our physical, our physical science rather than?
I teach, I teach two sections of life science and we have six sections of physical science.
Any idea what the percentage of the freshmen are who are able to take biology or advanced biology their freshman year?
I don't have it, I have it in my computer at school. Because I actually go through and I have created a rubric that each eighth grade science teacher fills out to help base our students. So that they're going into the proper, and I go through and I add up all of the rubric scores. So, I can tell you exactly how many are going to honors regular physical science.
When, when I became principal of the high school, it took me a little while, but we figured out 75% of our freshmen came up who needed, who needed to take Algebra I in, over a two-year period. 25% were able to take Algebra I as freshmen. There was something really wrong there. So, we worked really hard with the middle school teachers to change the curriculum and the materials and that kind of thing. And over a period of time, it flipped where 75% were coming up ready to take Algebra I, 1, 2 their first year. That's an enormous change. So, I think you're, you know, you're on the right track, and I think Al's questions are pointed questions, are very good and something to think about. But I fully support this kind of investigation you're doing to figure out what, what's happening here and where are the holes? Because that's, that's going to be where you stop all of this.
I think there's another element here that we need to put in the back of our minds. I took chemistry in high school. I got a D in it. It's called a discipline for a reason. You know, we can try to make it easy for students, but that doesn't mean that we're educating them. That just means we're making it easy for them.
We're still teaching chemistry and we have advanced chemistry, it's what honors chemistry or it could be AP or what, but we still offer chemistry, the regular chemistry.
Right. Seven years ago, we had a huge change in this district, and we took sixth grade and put them at elementary. And that created a huge change for our alignment. At some schools, they teach science every day, not at every school at the elementary level. And so, when, and I'm the science teacher now, and I am not a science teacher, not the major, I've had to learn it in the last two, two years because I've taken it over for our team. So, it's not my strong suit. I'm sorry, I just can't. But, but, we don't, it's, it's not, I mean, most of our schools are not teaching it or solid teaching it, likely were when we were at the middle school. They had it every day, they had it for an hour every day. It was integrated, it was, I would like to see the data for the last 10 years. If 10 years ago, were you seeing this versus in the last seven years, have you seen a decline? Because in my thoughts, I think it has a lot to do with our structure of our, our district and how we change.
And also, no child left behind and conundrum, all the reform because what gets tested gets taught.
Well, but even with no child.
Testing creates problems in your system and takes time away from not only science and social studies, but from PE and art and music as well. And let's don't forget recess. And it's part of it, this is a result of this so-called reform since 1999.
But even with no childhood behind, I don't think we were seeing this issue because we had full-on science in sixth grade. We don't have full-on science in sixth grade. So, there was an alignment, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
And, well, some of us have mixed.
Are fortunate too.
Thank you for the history. We voted on this, right? We're going to move on to 6.3, but thank you for preaching on the.
Never, never finish. Never.
I know. All so far. Okay, 6.3, approval of the contract for contracted speech services with therapy staffing. This is a sire.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, members of the board, we are recommending that the board approve that the effective therapy is staffing for teletherapy with a speech therapist for 17, 18 for the remainder of the year, not to exceed 30,800. We have had a critical vacancy of a speech therapist position, and in order to fulfill the services that we need to provide for our students, we need to supplement our speech therapy with the teletherapy.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve 6.3 as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Call for the vote. Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Madison?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cullen?
Yes.
Item 6.4, approval of vouchers for student activity funds and auxiliary funds. Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve the vouchers for November 2017, student activity funds for K through 12 for the month of October, as well as the auxiliary funds for the month of October 2017.
Do I have a motion?
I move we approve 6.4 as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Concerns, suggestions, reforming suggestions? This really does look great. Thank you. John Madison?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cullen? Okay, we're to the informational part. This is a sire.
I do have a couple of things this evening. I do want to, as always, point out on our gifts and donations, the, how much we appreciate participation of our community and the support for our schools. When we talk about the year-to-date totals for the 17, 18 school year, we're up to almost $120,000 that's been donated in goods. That's just an amazing contribution, and so we greatly appreciate it. I also wanted to mention on a, on a sad note, that we did have our manager, cafeteria manager, our top manager, Pat Gray passed away last week. And so, one of the things that is, is interesting is that you don't necessarily get to know the cafeteria people, you don't think about that. But at every single school event where there were cookies for the honor society, or junior honor society, or the science projects, Pat was always there, every night event facilitating those events, and she's a huge lost one district. They are going to have services for her on January the 13th, which is a Saturday at the Hospital Gemmett 11. So, that was unfortunate. It was mentioned earlier that we did have three teachers that were recently certified as nationally board certified, and so, of course, that's a, those who choose to take that pathway is a very grueling process, and we do congratulate those teachers. We are up to 15 nationally board certified teachers in our district, which is, is pretty amazing. And then, the final thing I would like to mention is our new webpage is funding online. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's very exciting, and there are still some, you know, little things here and there that we're catching, but it's, it's great. And I would like to compliment Denise and her team. Gina Flores particularly has been working on that webpage all hours of the day and night and frightening things and following up on it. She's very proud of the work that she's done and should be, it looks great. So, those are fantastic.
Yay!
Long time coming.
Yes.
Really does look good. Wasn't that too intense?
Yeah, right. We're going to bang that out, won't we?
And then, of course, finally, this is our last meeting for the year, and I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. to wish everyone a very merry Christmas and a very many blessings for the year 2018.
I've been walking by the high school, will say something. It's really looking good, that new paint job.
Yeah.
I mean, it just is really going to be nice looking, so I want to let you know that.
How we're improving the neighborhood, we're driving up your property values.
That's good. That's good. I see the lights almost every night, so that's good.
Thank you.
And do we have anything, any directors' reports besides what we have in our book? What kind? Any board members have any, anything they'd like to share?
So I'll just share the We the People competition last weekend. I guess Lake Havasu unified, took first and second, and Mojave Valley took third. So now I guess they'll go on to the state and that's a tough gig. So everybody in this room should be a judge next year. It's a good time. And then also, Carol just handed me before the meeting that the Lake Havasu City Elks did an essay contest. And so we have our winners here and I'm dying to read these essays there on, it was on Americanism essay contest. So Oro Grande first place for fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade and eighth grade. Oro Grande was in first place. Jamaica was in first place for sixth grade. Thunderbolt for seventh grade. Oro Grande, second place for fifth grade. Calvary Christian, this is, this is a lot of them. I'm not going to go through the whole list because now I'm going to get confused. Let's see. Smoke Tree, Oro Grande, Jamaica, and Thunderbolt. Yay! Did a great job. But I would, I, I think the whole board would like to read the essays if we can get our hands on it. So that always excites us. And I too would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a safe New Year to you and your families. And I think next up is, do we have any more calls to public?
I forgot to say this. So I wanted to get a little history on what's in your bag. So my dad, my, my parents were also teachers in the district. And dad, one thing that he did do every Christmas, and it began in December, he would go out and buy all his supplies and our house was filled with lots of sugar and caro syrup and raw peanuts and pecans and, and I licked lots of bowls. And so I, you have fudge and peanut brittle in your bag. So enjoy it and those are family recipes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No more calls to public? Any clarification for the price? Okay. All right, our next meeting is going to be the, let's see, I have it right here. January 9th at 3:30, we're having our organizational meeting. And then our next, which we will be, we vote for our president. And then the next meeting after that, the regular meeting is January-
And there's a workshop sometime.
On the same day, okay. And then the regular meeting is January 16th. So, yeah. So a motion to the chair.
Yeah, I was going to say I'll see you next morning. I want to schedule you in yourself.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
This is Thursday.
I'll second that.
New day, kids coming, some Christmas.
Kathy Cox?
I don't know.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you.